To order. Uh, today is Tuesday, May seventh, our regularly scheduled meeting at Mowbridge City Hall. Heather, would you call the roll, please?
Mound?
Here.
Cerny? Riker?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Chemnitz?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Okay, up next we have pledge of allegiance. I'll ask, uh, Councilman Curtis to lead us.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up next we have adopt the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Cerny? Oops, she's not here. Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound? Yes.
Okay, up next we have, uh, two minutes, two sets of minutes. Uh, first off, the March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four equalization meeting minutes. They're in your packet. Uh, if there's no additions or corrections, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound? Yes.
And we have the April tenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting minutes. Uh, if there's no additions or corrections to those in your packet, I will look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Okay, we have no unfinished business. Um, they'll take us into new business. The first item, uh, since this would be the first meeting where we would be seating new councils, uh, this is where we do election of officers and mayoral appointments. I guess the first thing is elect a council president and vice president. So I guess I would open up to the council to nominate, uh, council president. Previous council president, Randy Carlson, so.
I'll nominate Randy. I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
I'm staying.
Mound?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Um, vice president, um, previous vice president was Chemnitz. So I will call for nomination for a new council vice president.
I'll nominate Mr. Chemnitz as the vice president.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
I'm staying.
Okay, the second item under new business for council is approve mayoral appointments. Uh, there was a couple of corrections. It looks like they were just handed out. So if everyone's had a chance to look over the appointments, I guess I'd call for a motion to go ahead and approve the appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, now we're on to water and wastewater department. Um, I'm guessing Kurt's not here, so I'm guessing that's you, Garrett.
We need to go out the podium.
Okay. Looks like this is about to be a big show.
It shouldn't be too controversial. Okay, Jared Klumandi with more engineering. Um, generally, um, I just have a couple of things to go through with you, a couple of updates and a couple of things I'm gonna seek approval on. Um, so I sent down an engineers report to Kurt. We went through these things. Um, I'm, I confidently say that, um, he concurred with the, um, recommendations we're gonna make tonight. Um, so, uh, speaking on his behalf, I'm pretty confident here, but generally, um, you know, of the three water system projects that we're working on, in March, you guys, uh, recommended award to, um, your two contractors contingent upon the funding agency approval. We have a letter here from the D A and R basically saying that, um, referencing the water project and they're authorizing you to award a construction contract to both contractors. So they've reviewed the documents and are, um, happy with that. So, um, just generally, the construction contracts are here, they're in your packets. Um, with one error on contract number two, um, or excuse me, con- yes, contract number two. Uh, so if you look in your packets, uh, we should have struck out a little bit of the language referencing contract one. I'm not an attorney, so I don't know if it's a big deal or not, but we should just get it fixed, um, and, and resolved. So I do recommend, you know, based on your previous motion in, in March to, um, approve the contracts and now with the funding agency's approval, um, seeking approval, um, to sign the contracts.
Okay, and like what we talked about before the meeting, you're gonna take out the
Yep, on, on-
Four point oh five, number three, you've got the
I'll strike-
Two thousand dollars.
Yep, I'll strike the language here on page one of the construction contract on contract number two. Yep.
Anybody got questions or comments on that? So you're looking for a motion to go ahead and approve of the agreement with Payload LLC for the water storage tank pending the correction.
Yes, please.
Okay. Guess I'll call for that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
And then likewise, I think we, we do need a motion, um, approving contract number two for Crow River.
Now, were you gonna strike anything on that or is this?
No, sir. That one-
This was the right, okay.
That one's correct.
All right. Uh, any questions, comments, discussions on that? Um, approve agreement with Crow River Construction LLC for the Water Transmission Lines Project. If there's no questions or comments or discussion, I'll call for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, regarding those projects, so it's, it's one funding source, two construction contractors. Um, generally, I'm just gonna talk about the schedule here. Pre-load, which is the contractor building the tank, um, they'll begin their site work and foundation work this fall. And then it sounds like the final construction of the tank, the placement on top of the foundation will be done in twenty twenty-five. So there's no payment request tonight. Um, as we approve shop drawings, um, I would expect that we'll have a payment to make for, for them for stored materials sometime this summer. Um, the only thing we do have on that one, um, if you guys recall in March, we got no bids on the electrical portion of that project. So, uh, we sent the plans to four local electricians. Um, got two bids, um, regarding the electrical. Um, so this is change order number one, which is to, to award or it, it's, it's change ordering the electrical work into Crow, or excuse me, um, preload's contract. Um, of the four bids, we got the lowest bid was from, uh, Milliken Electric. So you'll see in your packet, change order number one is for sixty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars. It's well within our estimated budget for that line item. So I do recommend award of change order number one.
Any questions or comments on, uh, approving change order number one for sixty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars? Okay, if not, I'll look for a motion to go ahead and approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Riker?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes. Okay, so then just an update on contract number two. That's the, um, water transmission line, the Crow River we're building. Um, within their contract, we'll be demoing the old tank that will commence here this summer. Um, the underground installation is most likely to happen in twenty twenty-five unless they decide, you know, later this fall that their workload allows them to, to get here and, and complete that, that work. They're expecting nine weeks of underground, so, um, but just as of right now, keep in mind, you know, we have three hundred thousand dollars in construction contingencies and we're kinda monitoring how the other bids come in. And if we, um, you know, if we get successful bids, we may as a council decide to add more water main work to that contract. That would be the other portion of the transmission line, so. They were actually, um, it was, it was kinda their idea to wait a little bit to see how the bids came in because it made sense for them. They would prefer to do the whole stretch of work as long as the, the bids and the rest of the funding allows it. So, um, they're gonna wait for now. So just an update there. No approvals for Crow River. Um, I have, um, gonna seek approval for, um, the engineering agreements for task order one for construction engineering work on both of these projects. So included in your packets, um, I've got task order number one. If you guys recall, back in February, we ag- we entered into a master service agreement with each other that defined categories and responsibilities, scope, rates, terms, conditions, everything like that. Um, what this is, is, um, task order number one for the construction services on this, or these two projects. So it says that we'll have an engineer on site, for estimated seven hundred hours for the different portions of the work. Um, construction staking services, construction contract, engineering services, and then post-construction services, you know, to close out the job with the funding agencies. So again, I went through this with Kurt when we did the engineer's statement of cost back in March after the bids. We had a budget amount for this. We just had to wait for their schedules before we could actually write the contract. So within that five point, um, five point two million dollar project, there's a, there's a budget for these services and this matches that. So I'm seeking approval of a task order number one.
Okay, are you looking for, you're not looking for a dollar amount today? You're just, the dollar amount's what, the two nineteen, three seventy-nine?
It's a budget, yeah.
Okay, so you're just looking for the approval of the task order?
Please.
Okay.
Yep, no invoices, but just a bu- approval of the budget.
Okay. So any questions or comments on that? Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion, uh, for the agreement for construction engineering services on task order number one of the water tank project. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Okay, and generally, the, the last thing that I have for you is, um, uh, okay, water treatment plant project. So the last time we bid this project in late August, the bids came in high. And we went through the project, went through the plans, went through quotes, different things. Um, one of the items we found out is that there didn't seem to be very good competition when it came to the materials that were being selected on this. There's, um, some pre-engineered products that we need to replace at the treatment plant. So the way it was bid last time, it was one general construction contract. This time we did it a little bit different. Um, it's called procurement of construction equipment. So we went through a different process, requested, um, requests for proposals from the different vendors that supply the, the different items. If you look in your, um, packet, this, um, it's, it's kinda like a bid score sheet, but it's a little bit different. Each one of these came with about thirty pages of, of documents. So we ended up getting five equipment proposals from different vendors across the region to supply equipment at the treatment plant. You can't necessarily always go with the lowest bid, you know, so, there's other factors that play into them. You know, if you, if you select something that's very cheap, but it creates a lot of construction in order to install it, or creates other motors or other, you know, other mechanical things that we don't have today, it could actually end up being more expensive in the end. So we went through the five proposals with Public Works twice last week. Um, narrowed it down to the, um, the recommended, the vendor of Vesco that will, that will supply the flocculation equipment, the clarifier troughs, and the chain and, and flight clarifier equipment. And then the, um, construction, or the vendor of Van Bergen or Evoqua is the name of the product for the chain and flight clarifier equipment. Excuse me, the previously, the, the third thing I meant to say was the tank baffle walls. So what this means is that the last time we bid this, the bid for the electrical came in at over a million, or the bid for the equipment came in at over a million dollars. By doing this a little differently this time, allowing competition upfront, the, the bids for the equipment came in at six hundred and forty-three thousand. So now what we'll do is, we're gonna now send out the full project for bids for installation of these items. So we're gonna write into the bids that they shall purchase these pieces of equipment. It's designed around these pieces of equipment and it's their job to basically install it. So it's a different way of doing things. The D A and R has a very specific process for how we can do this, so they do allow it. Um, but it's only in specific cases where, you know, we're procuring equipment that, uh, you know, has specific purposes. Understand? Make sense? Okay, all right. So what D N R has requested is just a, um, we wrote a letter basically recommending that, uh, you select these products. Um, it just says, after reviewing the proposals for said projects, our recommendation that the city of Mowbridge award proposals contingent upon funding agency approval for Vesco for the three items that I mentioned and Van Bergen for the other item. And, uh, copies the, um, now, you know, the copies of this is, are attached and copies of all the proposals are attached. And D A and R would like to see the city's concurrence in those recommendations. So.
So you're buying the flocculation equipment, clarifier trough equipment and tank baffle walls from Vesco? And then you're buying the chain and flight clarifier from Van Bergen?
Yes.
Okay.
I got a question on that Van Bergen. So it has like two hundred and sixty eighth up. Did, did they come in a little bit lower? Cause the total between the two companies is like six hundred and forty-three thousand?
Yeah.
Did that come in a little lower than what they had on that other deal there then? Is that why there's a little bit difference?
Right, so-
It's like twenty?
So Vesco bid on items one, one, two, and four. And if you selected all of their items, they offered a twenty-five thousand dollar discount.
Okay, okay.
They did not bid on item number three. And so the low bid on item number three was, um, from Evoqua.
Okay, that's just, I was wondering where that, that twenty thousand some dollars was, the discount was, that's, okay.
Yep.
That answered it for me.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it, it was, uh, it's never, never apples to apples with water treatment, wastewater treatment plant equipment. It's, I would say that doing it this way is a lot more work. Um, but we did, you know, have a, over three hundred and fifty thousand dollar savings. So it, it's good. Um, contractor now has clarity, um, as far as, you know, he doesn't have to then go through this process. It makes it simple for the construction contractor. He knows he's buying these four pieces of equipment and will be installing around them. Previously, we were allowing that competition. You know, we're allowing him to negotiate with vendors and it just, uh, we, we saw a lot of markup in that process. So we're happier with this.
Any more questions, comments? So what's the, all right, so the grand totals are six forty-three, nine fifty-two?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so if there's no other questions or comments, I guess I would look for a motion to approve the equipment procurement bids for the water treatment plant. Where are the six forty-three, nine fifty-two? So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
It looks like the other two items on here are for Kurt. They're not for me, so Heather, I'm gonna pass on this.
Okay.
All right, thank you folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, thanks.
Okay, up next, uh, is approved step increase for Darren Brown, our water plant manager. Increasing the hourly wage from twenty-five thirty-seven to twenty-five seventy-two effective May sixth of twenty twenty-four. If there are no questions or comments, I'll call for a motion to make that approval.
So moved.
Call the roll, please.
Mound?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, and then lastly, um, approve, approved quote for boiler system for the pretreatment building at the wastewater treatment plant. And it looks like that is in your packet.
And we did put out, um, we got bids or quotes from all the, the surrounding local vendors and this was the lowest quote that came in.
The quote was twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. If there's no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our water and wastewater department, so we'll move over to police department. Um, Chief Sean.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight I'd like to ask the council, uh, to approve the purchase of three grappler police bumper kits for our patrol cars.
Okay, Heather sent out a video. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to look at the video, uh, know what they are. They're
You wanna explain a little bit?
Yeah, as I say, can you explain what they are quicker than I can?
I can try. So, um, what they are is they're, they're bumpers. It's a company that makes a special bumper that, uh, is used for bringing pursuits to an end, uh, safely. Um, the bumper has an extension on it that folds out with a netting material. And the patrol car will come up underneath the tires of the vehicle being pursued or whatever, and it basically locks the tires up, tethers them to the car, and you just bring them to a stop that way. And I just, I like the idea just because of the amount of pursuits that we've had lately. Um, it's a, it's a safe alternative to, um, trying to pit the vehicle, um, if they're gonna do that or anything like that. They're just, pursuits are just dangerous altogether, so. It's a good, safe way to hopefully bring them to an end.
Think, to deploy spikes, you have to be out of the vehicle and there was actually law enforcement.
Yep. Yeah, and they don't work all the time either. I mean, I mean, they work, but, uh, one of the last ones we had, uh, they were spiked on the south end of the Singing Bridge. Still came back into town on flat tires running on rims.
And you get it out of a controllable vehicle.
Yep. So ended up crashing on it. And a lot of the vehicles I've seen in our chases have had that, where they've been spiked and they just continue to run on rims.
So you're asking for an approval of twenty-one thousand dollars, uh, that comes with the kit and the training. Now will they send someone up here?
Yeah, they'll send their team up here to do the installation of the bumpers, um, and do the training for the officers that are gonna be running them.
Okay. You guys have any more questions or comments on that after all the information's been put out? Okay. Um, I guess with that, I'll look for a motion to go ahead and approve. Looks like three of them for twenty-one thousand dollars, seven thousand dollars each.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Last item I have on tonight's agenda is to ask the council to approve hiring Laura Meyer as our twenty-four-seven administrator at eighteen oh nine an hour, effective April fifteenth of twenty-four.
If there's no questions or comments on that, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Going back up to the grapples now that the approval, do you have an idea of when they'll be?
I don't know. We'll have to get an order and-
Okay.
Everything like that.
One more question. Is there anybody around here that has such a sensitive advice?
No.
There's one in North Dakota.
Yeah, the closest agency that we've found is in North Dakota right now.
Can you try them out on me?
Yep. I'll drive.
Yeah, yeah, we'll try them out on you and maybe the Tasers too.
I don't know. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah.
Okay, um, finance, looks like we have a couple of public hearings. The first one, public hearing and approval of a malt beverage license for Charles Damaris. Um, this one is the second story, second floor restaurant only, um, of the, did the Windjammer, the Wrangler?
Yeah.
Um,
Called the Chuck Wagon now.
The Chuck Wagon Restaurant. So, uh, since it is a public hearing, is there anyone to speak for or against this? Okay, hearing, no comment either way. I'll look for a motion to approve that.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, the other public hearing and approval is a malt beverage license for Rick's Cafe LLC. Uh, looks like we're transferring that license also.
Nope, this is a new license.
Oh, it's a new license, okay. Sorry, my mistake. Um, new license, same place. So, um, is there anyone to speak for or against the new license for Rick's? Okay, hearing none. I'll look for a motion to go ahead and approve that.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Okay, up next, approve malt beverage renewals. Uh, below is the list of malt beverages up for renewal. The licenses are from July one to Ju- June thirtieth. Okay, July one of twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty-five. All fees have been paid and property taxes are current. They are the Mowbridge Pit Stop, Great Plains Restaurant, La Cabana, Last Chance, Mowbridge Gas and Goody's one and two, Rick's Cafe LLC, Holiday Station Stores, Merkel's and Payless Foods, Dollar General, Donny's Pizza, The Mine and The Mine Two, Mowbridge Rodeo, Family Dollar, and Charles Damaris. Uh, if there's no questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to approve the malt beverage license renewals.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Okay, it looks like there's only one cemetery deed in your packet. So if there's no questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to approve the cemetery deed.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Um, we also have in our packets to approve, uh, Cahill, Bauer, and Associates for the twenty-three audit at a price of eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars. All of their information is in the packet. Are there any questions or comments on approval for the twenty-three audit? Okay, hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve that.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Chemnitz?
Yes.
Okay, and lastly, uh, under finance, uh, your twenty-twenty-three annual report. Uh, it was just completed and handed out. It's in front of you. Uh, it was just completed and handed out, it's in front of you. I guess, did you want to say anything or just if they have more questions, get with you?
Take a look at it, I know you just got it, so look it over, if you have questions, just come see me.
And just as an added bonus, I believe, required by law, you do this by this time and.
Yep, first meeting in May.
Time and effort into this, so, um, there is that, so guys look through it, if you have any questions, get back. Take us into miscellaneous, uh, we have approved a replat, uh, that's in your packet. Looks like the zoning board approved it at their last meeting, this is out on, well, the legal description, but it's the old Peterson property, and I believe they're splitting some of that property off to put another residence on, if that is correct, so. Anyway, no questions or comments, I'll look for a motion to go ahead and approve the replat.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Riker?
Yes.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kimnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Okay, and then lastly, under miscellaneous, we have approved seasonal part-time hire in the park, uh, Jim Keller at sixteen forty-eight per hour. If there's no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
(cough)
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Okay, discussion information items. Your financial report, as usual, if you have any questions or comments on that.
Actually, you don't have it, so I will get it out to you, I had some issues that I needed to get resolved, so I'll get it out to you later this week.
So once it is emailed out and you have questions, feel free to get ahold of Heather, make an appointment to go over the financial report and the annual report, so. Uh, building permits in your packet, there's ten of them, uh, for a total of two hundred and sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Um, and then events update, events fun update. Looks like MJ is here.
Good evening. Um, a couple of the MYO board members and I met with all the coaches from around our area, it's my first time doing it. We met in Selby, and we sit around this big table, and we schedule all of our softball and baseball games, so that was new to me. So we now have all of our schedules and tournaments in the books, and Mowbridge will host their first baseball tournament in June. And I believe it's a two-dayer down at the softball field. Um, we moved the MYO dedication for the Kansas City Royals meal to next Monday because yesterday was bad weather. So the Kansas City Royals helped us along with the city of Mowbridge, put new backstops in at the softball fields, they look great. So thank you to Payless, Merkel's, and BK Bob for their donations for the meal coming up as well. Uh, the city boys have taken down the old softball dugouts on the South Field, and the high school welding class is building the new dugouts and should be installed within the next couple of weeks before school gets out. Um, they were building them in just one big metal piece, and they called Premier Equipment, and they'll come over and just lift it up, drive it over, set it down, so they look amazing, I did get a peek at them. Uh, last month, I did take the certified pool operating training and tested, so I am now a certified chemical pool operator for the next five years. Swimming lessons opened up last month, and it's full steam ahead, we're almost full on some of the sessions, so that's kinda nice. So if you know anybody that needs some lessons, get it now, call today. Um, this year, we have American Red Cross certified instructors, BB Schmaltz, Sophia Overland, and Grace Overland, so they are ready. Um, back in December, I actually applied for a grant for life jackets, and the reason that we have a need for life jackets at our pool is, um, over the last four years, we've had donations just from people that had, their kids grew out of the life jackets, and we've had, I think, five or six there. So I did fill out a grant back in December, um, from the Sea Toe Foundation, and that's more for rivers and lakes for safety for kids. So I did receive them. Um, it's called, it's called borrow and return, um, Life Jacket Foundation. And so we received eighteen of these, and this will help tremendously when we have those buses. A lot of those kids that get off those buses every single week, we don't know those kids, and a lot of them do go under and don't know how to swim, and this is gonna help because we're gonna see the yellow, and we'll just have them hanging up on the, the fence, and they can borrow and return, so that's gonna help a lot. Excited for that. Life jackets cost a lot of money.
Yeah, good job.
Um, let's see, so we continue to strive and make safety for our pool. We have eleven of our own employees that will be recertifying and getting their first time guard certification coming up, also seven from the surrounding communities. So we hope to be in the water exactly two weeks from today to start training, so let's pray for the warm weather. Uh, the donation board you see is missing behind you, I took them up to the pool. Um, the pool foundation purchased those, and they will be hung up tomorrow morning in the bathhouse, so it's gonna be nice to see right when you walk in the pool. And then, right now, I'm just, I'm in the full swing, getting the pool ready, concession stands for softball, helping MYO with scheduling, track meets. So no more fun updates, it's gonna be on the back order until like September.
That's fine.
Just update for the summer, that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, MJ. Alright, that concludes discussion information, that takes us to public forum and visitors. Uh, is there anyone tonight wishes to address the council? Okay, um, please come on up to the podium.
I'm Pastor David Warner, representing the New Freedom Baptist Church. Uh, and I'm here about a building permit that was approved on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four for, uh, construction of sidewalk, steps, parking lot on the north and, and east side of the New Freedom Baptist Church. And, uh, we were also told that we needed to put in a, a valley gutter lo- located on the east parking lot that connects to Sixth Avenue East. And, um, assumptions were made by all parties, including myself, and I just wanna say, before I get into this, I do not intend to point fingers at any particular party, because we all made assumptions. And the, um, of course, uh, valley gutter didn't work out, I just wanna lay out what transpired, and then some of my concerns. And I like to be on the same page as a, as a city, and, you know, get the thing resolved. But, um, after our meeting with the zoning officer and street department, we were told that they would mark the alley in Sixth Avenue East for Weedrick Construction to do the cement work. Both the zoning officer and the street department were present before the valley gutter was started and completed. And, uh, Weedrick Construction was told to use the building in Sixth Avenue East to determine where the valley gutter should be. And then after the rain last week, uh, the street department and zoning officer told Weedrick Construction and myself that we'd have to remove the valley gutter, uh, because it was draining to the north of Sixth Avenue East, and it should drain south. And, uh, a little bit difficult to do because the avenue is actually on the north side, two and a half inches lower than the south side. So it's not gonna drain that way, alright, so, uh, it was already removed, and, and I was told we're awaiting the city to survey the street to correct the drainage problems. And so my concerns is just, well, that drainage, it's always been a problem on, on the northeast part of that alley, where it just, it puddles up. And, um, I guess, I just don't want the church parking lot to become the alley, okay, and, and that's my concern. We have a handicap ramp there, and, uh, it could cause a lot of problems. And then there's one other issue, there's four posts, and I was told there was an easement for a telephone, whatever you call it, a box, to protect that box. The box is no longer there, it's just four posts, and when people back up out of the parking lot, we've had several close calls hitting the posts, you know, and I looked at where I was told the line actually is on the alley, and then you go, I believe the alley is twenty feet wide. Uh, if you, if you do that, the four posts are actually in the alley. And, um, this is, it's gonna be a problem, eventually somebody's gonna hit it, and it's gonna be a problem. And I just thought, well, since there's nothing inside the, the four posts, I'd really like to see if, if that can be taken care of also. So, um, you know, as far as, uh, Jackie, the zoning officer, and Ryan, the street department, I have nothing but good to say about them. I think they're very professional, and they've been very helpful, and like I said, from the very beginning, we made some assumptions, and, okay. I knew we had a drainage problem, and, you know, probably should've started with that first, okay? So I just appreciate the opportunity to, I, I thought, well, probably should go on record, and, and, and if, if there's anything else that needs to be done, we're glad to work with the city, we'd like to fix the, the problem with the drainage in that area if we can, if we can be a help. I don't wanna create a problem, so that's basically all I really have to say.
Only question I would have, and I, not to you, I just throw it out there, but with that easement on the telephone, would that be with WRT or would that be with WRT in the city?
So Jackie was actually gonna contact and figure out what utility that was, and see if they would take them out? We think it's WRT, but she was trying to get in touch with somebody to see if those posts could be removed.
Okay.
Um, we have audit here this week, so I'm not certain she's got around to it yet, because we've been busy these last couple days. Um, but she was going to check on that for you.
Okay.
Did you, did we check the street width from side to side to run down the slope so we had it better in the right spot?
Well, the, what, what my understanding was of what transpired is that we were asked to find the lot pins. We don't survey, we're not, our staff doesn't survey. So to move forward, I have asked more engineering to do it, because they have another property to do, to do the staking of the, the, um, yeah, the curb and gutter staking, so the water does flow the correct elevation. The city always pays for that one time for a property when they're putting in curb and gutter to make sure the water flows correctly. They're not coming until June to do another, there's another property in town I have them lined up to do, so we'll add that property to it. So you do have the correct flow, and your contractor knows how to pour it accurately, but we don't, the city staff are not certified surveyors.
Right, we have pins somewhere out there, we've been looking, but the detector, we'd have to dig a lot of different places, I'm not exactly sure about that. We did have it surveyed, and maybe we just need to find someone that can locate the pins for us.
Yeah, usually a surveyor could come and either find the pins for you or, or re-survey it.
I would've done that, but I was told from the very beginning, well, the, that's not a problem, the city would mark it. Uh, and I do understand that Sixth Avenue East from the north part to the south, the, the west side of the road is, is a little bit different, it doesn't run straight, so.
Right, correct.
So that created another problem, so, like I said, we made some assumptions, and it didn't work out for us, so.
Okay.
I think also, I, I just, I think that we should also establish a width of the street for the whole block. From where Merkel is on the corner, because I'm on Onyx here, and it looks like it's not the, maybe not the correct width either. So we should also establish a width of the street before we put the valley gutter in.
I certainly don't wanna do anything and, and have to tear it out, you know, so.
No, we just.
So we'll just wait till.
It's just, it'd be easy part of the survey.
Yep, and that's something that more engineering can help us with when they come down in June.
Is that a forty-foot street or a sixty-foot street? That's what we'd figure out.
It's gonna see, matter what the plat says.
And it's a gravel street to boot, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, is anyone else in the public forum? Okay, I'll take us to payment of the bills. Uh, if there's any questions or comments on the bills?
Right.
If not, I'll look for a motion to pay the bills.
I'll move.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mound?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Kimnitz?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Okay, next up, uh, right before we adjourn, Heather, I just wanna say how much I missed you last meeting, trying to keep track, so.
We all did.
So.
I watched the tape.
Well, shit.
I know, it was painful.
Was she gone?
Yeah, yeah.
Not as much as.
Everyone asked to call the roll, and nobody was there, so anyway, I just wanted to say that. Um, so with that being said, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mound?
Yes.
Riker?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kimnitz?
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Okay, meeting is adjourned, thanks, everyone.